Stand please and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, usually I have a sheet that reminds me of everything I need to do, but I don't have that tonight. So we'll go off memory and see if we can do it. Before we get underway, there's a few administrative matters that we need to take care of. First off, in the event of a fire, you will be notified. Use the exit, the exit through the doors that are to your left and use either the north or the south staircases to exit the building. We take the items in the agenda on the order that they appear on the agenda. The order in which we proceed is that the applicant will come forward, state their name or address, and then they will pause, be sworn, then they'll present their case. During the presentation of the applicant's case, the board is free to ask questions, engage in discussion, make comments, and that continues until all the questions and comments have been completed. When the applicant has completed their presentation, we will then open it up to the public hearing portion of the hearing. During the public input portion, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application is called first. After that, we take whoever is opposed to the application. And then after we've heard from the people who are opposed to the application, we'll hear from those who aren't in favor or opposed to the application itself, but have questions or want to comment about some aspect of the application or something that is germane to the application. Once that process has been completed, then the applicant can respond to anything that came up during the public input portion of the meeting. And when that is concluded, we close that case and move on to the next case. After all the applications have been heard, we then take a recess for a brief period of time that'll be announced. And when we come back, we deliberate and make decisions on the applications. During the deliberative portion of the meeting, there is no public input unless it's specifically requested by the board. During the public input portion, let's take a step back. The comments and questions are directed to the members of the board and not to the applicant. And there should not be any direct engagement between those who wish to have input and the applicant. Once we, when we're deliberating after the break, we take the applications in the order that they appear on the agenda and for which the applicant remains present. So if the first applicant has left, we would start with the second application if that applicant was here and go down in order of the applicants that are present. Then go back to the top of the agenda and take the cases of those who have left. If you're, you're welcome to leave at any point. If you don't stay for the deliberative portion and you're interested in knowing what the decision was, you may feel free to catch us on TV or you can call the zoning and planning department tomorrow morning here at the town hall after nine o'clock. Michelle, our secretary is taking notes during the meeting. So when you come to the podium, please be sure that you speak into the microphone. Please be sure that you give her your name and address. The notes that she's taking and the video of the meeting are for the purposes of making a record. They are not for the purposes of a transcript. If you wish a copy of the video, you can always get that through the town hall. Did I leave anything out of the administrative details that are on the sheet?
It's like you've been doing it for so many years.
It must be.
You got it like a champ.
And before we get underway, I did want to note two things of interest to members of the town. First off, in chronological order, several weeks ago after our last meeting, we learned that Chief Longdo, who had been a member of the zoning board, contrary to the obituary which said he was on the planning board, he was on the zoning board with us. He passed away and in the paper over the weekend, it was reported that Don Deming, a former supervisor and town councilman, had also passed away. So in the last couple of weeks, Aronecoy has lost two public servants. And I'd ask you to just keep them and their families in your thoughts and prayers. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1803-1. Upon the matter of request by LandTuck Surveying and Planning, acting as agent for Joe Prestajacamo, with the permission from the town of Aronecoy for area variances associated with the creation of a new 96.7 foot by 70 foot lot from tax ID 092.08-1-27.111 directly across from 1372 Bayshore Boulevard with less than required lot depth and lot area and a use variance to construct a 20 foot by 20 foot detached garage without a principal structure onsite in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Sharaba with LandTuck, representing Mr. Prestajacamo tonight.
You swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I think the public noticed stated everything very well what we're trying to accomplish here tonight. And I think that the, although this, this area in Aronecoy Bayshore Boulevard is very unique, an application such as this is not unique to this board. This area bordering Aronecoy Bay has significant limitations with the slopes and people are always looking for storage in garages in this area. And in fact, back in 2015, Mr. Chris Brett, if you remember, if you're on this board, made the same application that we did, that we are this evening. He was acquiring land from the town of Aronecoy and asked for an accessory structure. And so we're kind of following that same footprint. Mr. Prestajacamo is buying land directly across the street from the town of Aronecoy. This is coming out of a large 55 acre plus parcel that the town owns. Mr. Prestajacamo's lived along Bayshore since 2006 and then has joined the property. He's also taken liberties to park across the street in that existing gravel area. If you've driven by, you may have seen things that he's parked there. And back in 2015, a letter went out to all the neighbors on Bayshore saying, parking on town property is not allowed and please remove your trailers and structures and cars. So that made Mr. Prestajacamo move forward with an inquiry to the town for purchase of land. And that's kind of what brings us here tonight. Working with town staff and planning staff, the size of his parcel was dictated directly to him how big it could be. So we're basically creating a non-conforming parcel. So that is why, mainly why we are here. In creating that parcel, we also are asking for a use variance for a storage structure. On the property on the, on the east side of Bayshore Boulevard where the residence is, there is an existing small garage around 530 square feet, which Joe's wife parks in. There is no other room for storage in there and so that's just for one car. The property is a very recreational area. So in the summer, he's got a lot of equipment and the winter that he needs a place to store. And in the winter, he's got a lot of summer accessories, decks, chairs, things like that that he needs to store. And he's actually storing things offsite. So he's paying to store offsite out of his property and it's not very efficient. So we're asking for the use variance for a structure without a principal building, although he does live across the street. In doing so, we also noticed that we're going to need a front setback for that structure because it's too close to the road. And why do we, why don't we just push it back? Looking and trying to plan this parcel, although we don't have site plan approval yet, we're trying to find ways that if we put up a garage, we can also block and store some things in the back so that the garage will actually help buffer the public from anything that's stored out on this private property now. So that being said, we feel that this application is in the character of the neighborhood. There are numerous garages that along the frontage of Bayshore Boulevard. And as I said before, you recently approved another application. The size of the lot was dictated by the seller, which happens to be the town of Aronecoy. So we really don't have a mechanism in order to, to change that. There will be no physical change in the area. There's a flat spot. If you look on the plan, we've done a topographic survey. So we have a nice spot for that storage structure to be installed. So there won't be any major grade changes, trying to minimize tree removal and things like that. He still will need to get a permit from the town for access to that parcel, which we'll work through later if, if the board chooses to approve this application. Although this variance is self-created, Mr. Prestajacamo does have a need for storage and wants to discontinue the cost and having to travel offsite to store his, his things that he uses around for his home. So that's kind of a brief overview of what we're looking for.
The earlier application that you made reference to, when I drove down to look at the site pertaining to this application, I didn't see the garage that we'd approved.
It's not there yet. I didn't represent Mr. Brett on his zoning variance, but I know he did extensive work on his house last year. And I think all his money went into his house and I think that structure is coming soon.
Because I'm, as I was doing this, I was thinking, well, we approved one, it's not here yet. If we now approve this one, I now have this vision of an alley with garages on the east side that pertain to the houses and an alley full of garages and, well, they're not really garages, big storage sheds on the west side, one right after another with, with the, with this. Because everyone who's there on the bay always needs more storage. They get more boats, they get more water skis, they get more cars, they get more stuff. You said that his wife uses the garage that's there now, but, but it looked like to me like that was a two-car door. So what are the dimensions of the garage that are there already?
I might have to refer to my client, but I think I have it. It's 530 square feet, so I have to do some math on that, but that's a fairly small garage.
And my recollection is that the town limit on garage space is 900 square feet.
Correct.
So, and this is a 400 square foot garage that he's looking to build 20 by 20?
Correct.
So that would be 30 square feet total over the, the total.
Excuse me, Chairman, though, because it'd be a separate parcel, the variance for garage doesn't apply in this instance because it's separate parcels. Functionally, the lot would be serving as an accessory to the main home, but legally, you don't, couldn't count the garage space on separate parcels and combine them.
Oh, not for purposes of?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
But for purposes of considering how much space one property needs along the bay, I view that as a relevant consideration. I mean, we've turned down other property owners who wanted to build larger garages. They were doing it on the same side of the street as the house. And that's, you know, the only concern I have is because this is a use variance, what efforts have been made, if any, to ascertain what other reasonable rate of return might be realized from that property?
And I, and I fully understand the challenge of that request that you made regarding that. So I guess what we're, the use variance is always a difficult challenge for me as a site engineer. But looking at the economics is really quality of life of what he can do out there. Not store offsite. He has, he pays for storage. So this would be stopping a monthly fee that goes out, investing in the Aronecoy, investing in a piece of property where there's assessed value that would be increased. And I think it would keep it in here in Aronecoy on this, in this location. I know that's, that's kind of a stretch for me when we ask about the economic return, but that's really where we are. He's buying a piece of property from the town. That property is not buying it for a dollar. It's at full assessed value. There's appraisals, a process that he's going through with the town board. And I think the structure itself is just an added benefit to him. But he is, he is paying full retail value on the, on the land itself.
Well, I certainly hope that.
Yep.
Since the town was selling it to him, I assumed that the town was getting full, full value.
Yep. And if I can speak, I'm sorry.
What bothers me about this is that, as I said, that we get these applications so often that we're going to have garage after garage after garage after garage sitting on, on parcels. Perhaps somebody should buy a larger parcel and put up a big warehouse where everybody in the neighborhood can store all their boats and stuff and, and get into it. So it's one structure instead of 15 or 20 in a row.
Right. Well, and to that point, Mr. Chairman, I, I can't say I don't agree with you. But I think if you went down there last weekend or sometime during the day, if you look at the slopes, there's only a certain, a few areas that where, where these structures can be built. That steep slope is significant, almost right to the pavement edge. So Mr. Brett had a situation where he had a little place that could, that could work. And I think this property is unique. It's got a significant hill and then there's a flat spot, then it drops down to Denzmore Creek. So you're, I think you're a hundred percent correct in your assertion of, of that feeling of a tunnel. But I think as we move through and, you know, the, I know this board's familiar with the EPOD process that we'd have to go through for site plan approval and, and working in those steep slopes. So I think there's challenges, especially if you don't grant a variance to push them for other parcels other than this. If you push, you know, a 30-foot setback off the right of way is significant and you'll be well into those steep slopes. So.
You know, in agreeing with the applicant, there is a limitation of how many flat areas. This gentleman's lucky that he's got a flat area.
Um, Mr. LaPerry, can you just speak into the microphone? I apologize.
But there are a limitation of how many flat areas are directly across from the other homes. I would say maybe 25% of those houses along that could even do what he'd like to do. Cause a lot of them, that, that slope comes right to the road. So I also noticed this, this application is somewhat different than the last one in reference to the size. And I know we did ask that gentleman to cut his size back, which he did.
I think we did more than ask. I think we approved him for as big as he wanted, that we approved him for less. But he was willing to do it.
Yeah, he was very willing to make adjustments. And it, but again, still larger than this one. My question is, and I'm looking at this lay of the land map to the, to, if you're looking at it from the road to the left of the building is going to be a hill?
Correct.
Is drainage going to be an issue up against the side of that garage?
I'm not really worried about it. That drainage is really kind of moving to the north in this situation and to the gutter along Bayshore. But we'll, we'll make sure that when we go through the site plan process, we'll adequately address that. I really don't want to build anything right on that toe of slope.
Right, I, I can't imagine. The other question I noticed from the road, you had mentioned you're going to have to get a easement from the town so that, you're talking about the road easement to, is that?
I guess what I was referring to is the front setback. 30 foot is required and I'm proposing the structure at 22 and a half. So I'm deviation of code of eight and a half feet or seven and a half feet, excuse me. And.
But from, but from the road, there's still an additional, what, 15 to 20 feet?
Oh yeah, that's significantly off the road. It's that right of way and, and the right of way along Bayshore is, is very unique. It's, it's all over the place.
Right.
You'll need to get a curb cut or curb permit.
Correct.
And that'll cover it.
So a driveway, not showing here, is a driveway planned?
Well, if you look on there, there's a, there's an existing parking area. It's stone right now. I think that what we do is, is ratify that with a permit from the, from the town DPW and augment that, pushing that back further.
To meet up with the garage?
Correct.
Have you talked to him yet about the permit, John?
I have not talked into Bob Kiley about that specifically. We'll probably move through the planning process, but he's aware of the purchase and that process.
I'm just thinking that they're going to make you narrow that parking area down to a driveway size.
Yes.
And then extend the driveway behind it.
Okay.
Just for the board's awareness, the applicant wouldn't be able to move forward with this application without the Commissioner of Public Works authorizing them to proceed. The town was, as a, in reviewing this particular parcel, was inclined to allow the potential sale of town property for the reasons that the applicant stated is that there are limited opportunities or places where this could even happen. And so the town didn't foresee that this would sort of be a repetitive occurrence down Bayshore Boulevard. Additionally, DPW has a standard width and it's based on the percentage of the, of the width of the lot. And I'm quoting without looking at the code, but my, my, off, off the top of my head, I believe it's 35% of the width of the lot is allowed as a maximum for a curb cut. And so with the 90 and change, that would dictate how wide a curb cut could be. But that would be something that the Commissioner of Public Works would review and can make a determination whether to be more narrow or, you know, depending on the, the particular situation of the roadway. And the Commissioner will take a look at that and reviewing any application for highway permit.
If I could expand on Mr. LaPerry's comment about the garage size. Joe and I talked significantly time about that and he did not want to create a two-car garage construction on this site. It's really solely for storage. He wanted to, he didn't want to go super big. We wanted to come in here with what he really needed. So we were in a position to ask for 30 by 30 and only want 20. So we really just kind of dropped that size down. We feel it fits well with the parcel and I just wanted to explain that a little further.
Now, in the past, we had a situation on the bay where somebody had a house and then the county took over the road that went in front. And they had a dock sitting on the other side or they wanted to put a dock up on the other side, which was the same about the structure on an accessory lot that doesn't have a residence or a structure on it. And in that case, my recollection is that we conditioned the variance on a deed restriction that would preclude the sale of the property for which the variance was granted other than with a sale of the residence.
We would agree with that.
Alright, because otherwise we could have storage facilities that are put up and then sold individually and that would be a problem too, I think.
And I'm very familiar with what you're speaking to about the riparian boundaries. The DEC has land down there and it's, it's very challenging. That's what, Bayshore Boulevard is very unique.
And obviously, since the town owns the property and could block the whole thing by not selling it, the town doesn't have a big objection to this.
No, they, they do not and, or we do not. But the Commissioner of Public Works supported the application. The other thing is just so this board, just as a point of recollection, when the, the previous applicant who did something similar approached the town with interest in how to acquire the land, we actually did reach out to Monroe County Real Property to see if there was a way to add that parcel across the roadway and have it be appended to the primary, the, the primary parcel because there are some historic examples of that in other towns. However, those are sort of pre-existing, non, non-conforming. So even, even though that does exist elsewhere in the county, and I would point to places maybe in Greece and Hamlin and Hilton where road is on one side, the parcel crosses either a town road of some sort. The county did not want to replicate that going forward. And so it had to be its separate parcel. It could not be joined to the parent parcel. But I believe that this board made a condition of that passed approval with the neighboring property that they have to, the variance is tied with the, the two parcels being tied together.
You know, there, there was a deed restriction that we insisted be included in the deed. That it be filed, that the dependent property could not be sold except separately.
Right, and that's one of the reasons why in, in dictating the, the building lot size, that it could not be a, a legal conforming building lot. So it was, could not be used at some point in the future. But the deed restrictions and belt and suspenders approach that the town staff would certainly appreciate because memories fade.
Yes.
Quick question, power services?
We were not proposing any like latrals or water service, possibly electric, just to have a light on there to be able to access the building at night and safety. But no light spills to the public right of way or anything like that.
I have a question for you. We have these short environmental assessment forms. We had two parts to it. And I'm looking at part two with regard to this property. And nine and 10 kind of jumped out at me because this is a steep slope area. There were quite a few trees down there. And in fact, you even mentioned that there'll have to be some, some clearing to make way for this garage. So my question is, how do you determine that there's no adverse change to natural resources, including groundwater, air quality, flora, fauna, that type of stuff? And also that there's no increase in potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
Right.
So how do you, how do you determine that to be the case? I mean, or is it has to be something that's got to be engineered?
It is going to be engineered. So we are moving forward. If we were fortunate enough to get variance tonight, we would prepare a site plan detailing grading associated with the project, showing the proposed driveway, looking at the drainage patterns, make sure we're not negatively impacting those. When I say tree removal, there are some small shrub trees that, that I think we didn't need to, need to go. But any significant trees, we want to remain. And so I guess it's more of a significance thing. When I look at a project of such a small scale, that minor trimming of trees in this area, even changing, adding some imperviousness area, we were so close to the bay that the water's basically going to drain to Denzmore Creek, under Bayshore Boulevard and out to the bay. So I guess in filling out that form is more of a significance. So I don't think that there's any significant change in the, in the, in the 55 acres of the trees that'll be there. So any, any tree clearing will be minimal. The damage or the drainage will be handled very efficiently with a grading plan. Be directed away from the slopes towards Denzmore Creek and towards the gutter within the Bayshore Boulevard roadway. So I think all those things can be accomplished. I don't think it's a significant change.
Okay.
Will the use of a, any type of retaining wall behind the building?
I'm not proposing any. You know, if anything, maybe the garage itself will work at its own retaining wall. Maybe go up a couple of courses of block and, and do that to hold that slope back.
No real trees are going to be removed on the slope?
No.
Just in the flat area?
Just in the flat area.
I got a question for staff. Because this, because this is such a unique situation, what is the rear setback required?
Rear setback requirement would be 30 feet?
Okay, alright.
And just for this board's knowledge, the, because the applicant needs to subdivide a portion of land away from what is a larger town-owned parcel, they will subsequently, subsequent to this board's deliberation would be then, if approved, the variances would make application to the planning board for site plan or excuse me, subdivision approval. And if the boundary of the EPOD crosses into this area, we would include EPOD permit as part of that review. But planning board will be looking at things along the lines of drainage, erosion control to make sure that the physical buildout that's being proposed is accommodated.
So you said the rear setback would be 50 feet?
No, 30 in a.
30 feet?
That's the requirement.
So they would need a, as I see it laid out here on the topographical map?
Yeah.
It would be 28.4, right?
Correct.
So they'd need a.
My apologies, I apologize. I didn't, when I, in reviewing the application, I was so focused on the front setback, I didn't note the, the, the rear. So I do apologize. We can add that in as a.
Okay.
As a requirement for the area variances.
So is the access to the garage going to face Bayshore Boulevard or is it going to be to the north side, the doors?
So again, it's not intended to be a garage, so we're not proposing vehicles pulling in. And I haven't really discussed that with Mr. Prestajacamo. Maybe Joe can answer that.
Oh no, I'm sorry.
Storage, but maybe the door.
Correct myself.
Door facing Bayshore.
Alright, cause I, I noticed that what's parked there now are two very large boats. Are they going to be in the garage or in this storage structure? Alright, so that would require a pretty big sized door to get that in.
Yep.
And that's going to face Bayshore? Okay.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. And looking at the setbacks, the 30-foot setback is required for a principal structure since this is accessory, the, you meet the accessory code requirement, which is four feet off of rear and side. So that's why it wasn't included in the original.
Alright.
So now I feel better about myself.
Alright.
I missed it too. So I was like, I was flipping, trying to figure out if I.
But that allows me to raise the next question. Why not move the building back four feet?
Why not move the building back four feet or six or five and a half feet and not have to have a front variance?
We could, we could do that. It was intended to, you know, it was so far off the road, the roadway and that, the right of way that we don't see is so big. So if the board sees fit to remove that variance, we do not have a problem moving that back to seven and a half feet.
But you did mention the fact that having the space behind the building could help if you had a jet ski or something you wanted to store behind.
Exactly. That was our intent, to screen, use the building as a screen.
That would be why he's got it.
It's only five feet or
And I failed to mention too, that the proposed garage is to be in common with his house. So it's going to be a frame painted the same color, same style.
But from the edge of the pavement to the edge of the lot that's going to be sold, there's a significant distance.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, I would say it's at least twenty feet.
Right. So in essence, from the side of the road, it's going to be set back like forty feet.
Yeah.
But it's just, he doesn't own all of that.
Right. That imaginary right of way that we're working within and
Have to be careful not to trip over those.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about setbacks, garages, storage facilities, boats, jet skis, anything related like that at all? Someone step right up. All right. Seeing none, we'll
Might have a question.
So if you have a question or
I have a question just to ask John.
Okay. So you don't want to have public input. All right. Then we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next item on the agenda.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one eight zero three dash two. Upon the matter of request by Karen and Ken Mason for an area variance to construct an attached green porch with less than required rear setback on premises twenty-six, twenty-six Von Debben Lane in an R one residential district.
Hi, we're the homeowners, Karen and Ken Mason at twenty-six Von Debben Lane and we'd like to
Raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I didn't.
Okay.
We'd like to build a screen porch at the back of our house. And we learned that the setback is thirty feet and we're asking for a variance of fifteen feet. So we have room to build the screen porch. And we brought letters from, of support from our neighbors.
Is there already a porch there?
No, it's just flat across the back.
Cause when I was looking at it, cause I was looking at it from across the street, there's a break in the houses to the north. I was looking back, it looked like there was some kind of a screened-in structure already in the back.
Our screen porch on the side?
On the side, there's a sun porch.
Yeah.
That's in line with the, it's on the corner.
That's in line with the, with the back of the house. Okay. So this would go off the back fifteen feet.
Almost in the middle and push towards the back.
Okay.
I think there's a map.
There is. And you'd like to be able to sit out there in the spring and summer and fall and not be bothered by mosquitoes and other things that wouldn't interfere with your enjoy.
And sleep there whenever it's above fifty-five degrees.
Well, sleeping when it's forty is very nice as well.
I was looking at the house. It's a, it's a nice spot. It's kind of difficult to find.
Yeah.
Which, as a firefighter, volunteer and run, I was worried that if somebody had to find that street in the dark and so I mean, that's a very tiny little sign. I actually missed it a couple of times.
Yeah.
I'd recommend looking into that somehow, so you can find it. But regardless, it's a, it's a nice spot, it's a nice area. And I certainly agree with your, your project. I hope that, you know, you'll be able to do that and enjoy the back of your house. Because right now, you can't enjoy the back of your house. I was going to go back and take a look, but you know, until I get a sign that says zoning board for my car, I'm not going to park it on the street and walk around. People aren't going to know what I'm doing now. So maybe someday.
Someday. We've put in that request before.
I've got nine more months. Anyway, that's, I, I think it's a good idea. More for it.
I, the footprint in your backyard was probably mine. It seems, seems, it seems pretty, pretty steep. So my only concern is the stabilization. I don't, I see two posts here. I'm not sure if that's enough for, for that test.
If you will, just so you know, the applicants need to come seek an EPOD permit from the planning board associated with the project. And so that will be one of the things that the planning board looks at as part of the EPOD permitting process is how they're treating the development around the area that's getting close to the slope.
And wouldn't that process also include whether or not structurally those two posts are sufficient?
That would actually be a building permit issue.
Right.
The, yeah, so between the planning board's review for the purposes of site plan and stability and the issuance of the EPOD, that'll address the structural, sort of the earth's ability to support the proposed structure. And then our building department would review the building plans and make sure that it was sized and supported properly and in accordance with New York State Building Code.
While I was in the backyard today for a moment, straight behind you through the forest is another one looking right at you. So done similar to the way yours is done. So it, you know, give you a good idea of how it's going to come out.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about porches? Anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next item on our agenda.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one eight zero three dash three. Upon the matter of request by Gary Bertram for an area variance to maintain a six-foot-high side yard wooden fence exceeding maximum permitted height on premises thirty-two Walls Road in an R two residential district.
Hi, I'm Gary Bertram from thirty-two Walls Road.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So when I drove by and looked at your, your place, I see that you, I'm guessing that you put this up without a permit.
I did.
All right.
And I apologize for that.
Had you gotten a permit, they would have explained to you that the finished side of the fence needs to face out, not in. If we approve the variance that you're asking for, can you reface the fence so that the finished side is out and the posts are in?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason that you have need of the fence where it is is because
Well, I'm planning on putting a patio on the side. I took out some large trees that were in the way and it was kind of looming over my neighbor's house as well as my house. And it kind of left us kind of open and bare. So basically what I'd like to do is just have some privacy there. So we can sit outside.
And your house backs up to the Verizon.
That's correct.
Right?
Right.
And then just south of that is another commercial property that I think is either abbots or vacant now.
That's correct.
So you have a lot of public traffic behind your house?
I do.
And the fence gives you some privacy?
Privacy, yeah. I'm going to be taking those pine trees down that are looming over my power lines as well. So I'm planning on doing that and then it would be nice to have that fence go all the way across the back. I don't plan on continuing it on the north side. I'm going to leave that chain link fence there.
Now, in the application, you've there's some orange highlighter that says you're relocating it or you're thinking of, I don't know.
I'd be willing to relocate it. I, after putting it, I, I used the same fence line that was there previously and I put it in there thinking that that would be okay. But after looking at it, it does protrude out a little bit far. And I would be willing to move it, set it back, you know, towards the middle of the house. So I, that way I would have at least a little space of my side yard, basically.
What about just cutting the whole thing down to four feet?
That doesn't give me the privacy that I really need because one of the things I have is the, the neighbors that are a couple of doors down, they have a whole bunch of cars, I don't know, they have a used car lot there or something and it's some, you know, I'm a little bit concerned about them.
It's almost right across the street from you, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, well, it's on the same side of my street and they have lots of cars out there all the time and they're not the best neighbors, I don't think. But regardless, I need some security as well as privacy. I have very large basement windows that I plan on putting blocks in at some point. But once I move that fence forward, I will be more susceptible towards them breaking into that side in, you know, those windows. So it's, it's for privacy and security as well.
Mr. Bertram, do you live at this location or is this a business location for you? Cause on your mailbox, it makes reference to your business. And in speaking to someone who came out of your location, they said you don't live there.
I, I conduct, I conduct my business out of there and my son lives there.
So it's not your residence, it's
That's correct. It's just my business residence, business, business. I use the garage, the back garage for myself.
Now, does the tractor trailer and the, and the caterpillar or whatever it is, is that permanently there or is that
No, that will be going once I get all my stuff gone. I have actually another site that I'm going to be acquiring, was actually in April. So all that stuff will be gone.
What is, let me just ask this. The business that you're running out of the, the property, do you have a home occupation permit for that?
Um, no, I don't.
All right. Well, they can help you out up at the planning and zoning. I think you need to have a home occupation permit.
Does that, even if I take my business to another site? Is that, cause I'm planning on doing that in April or maybe May at the very latest.
You mean moving it, the business completely out of the property?
Moving it right out of there. Yep.
I don't think you'd probably apply in that timeframe. So you're probably all right if you move it, but if you stay.
I have to do it. I gotta Okay.
I have one. It's not difficult to get. I think it costs twenty-five dollars.
Okay. Well, we can do it for the time being.
What kind of business is it?
Heating and air conditioning.
Okay.
And, and the reason you can't take it back to the, other than the basement windows, the reason you can't take it back to the back corner?
I lose that whole side yard.
I mean, you, you have a large backyard.
My plan is to actually make a driveway, extend that driveway off to the side of the garage. So I have a little more parking space there. So that would take some of my yard away. So I was hoping to have a little spot where we could have a patio.
I mean, that's a twenty, twenty-foot wide garage or driveway back there. I, I think you'd have to question or the town would have to question how much more driveway you could put in based on, based on the
Lot coverage.
Lot coverage. You might not be able to add driveway.
Okay.
You've got quite a bit now based on your lot coverage.
Well, before I did that, I would get in front of you guys, make sure I don't do anything.
The wooden fence that you put up goes all the way back to the back corner, right?
That's correct.
All right. So it's just the front portion that you need the and does it, I didn't go into the back of your place. Does it go across the back as well? The back lot?
Yes.
I just looked at it from the street.
Well, I don't have the, the new fences installed back there yet. I just stopped.
It's going to go and block the Verizon.
Right.
Okay.
And the other thing is, is my neighbor's yard sits like a foot or two above my grade of my yard. So it's really, when you stand in her yard, it's not really six foot. You know, on her side. And she's in very much agreement with, she loved it. I didn't get a letter from her, but
There was a complaint. I don't know if that was a town complaint or a neighbor complaint about the fence. The people that live in the house to the right of you there, that most directly affects, have they
She's the one that thinks it's great. She loved it. She was very, very supportive of the whole idea, project. My neighbor to the left of me is to the north side as well, is very supportive of the whole situation. And across the street from me, all those neighbors were in agreement with it and liked the way it looked. But, you know, I would be willing to move it back to make it less obtrusive to the road.
Is there a door on the backside of the
There is, just so I can get my trailer out of there. But that may not be there because I'm going to be moving so the business, so.
You, you're, you're, you're planning to put an egress window in on the
On the
Lower right?
Yes, that would, that would be the
Or the back
South side?
Yeah, the back, yeah, southeast side, right.
I can't put it on the back. Well, I have a side door on the south, on the north side. It would be kind of redundant to put it on the backside, but on the right side or the south side would be the way to go. I have an electric service that's right in the back corner, so I can't put it in the back corner.
Do you need, is there a reason you need the egress window? Is it the basement?
Well, I'm planning on finishing off the basement. I'm also going to be residing the house and I've got all kinds of plans to do with it. So I'm going to try to match the fence with the siding and stuff like that, so.
Before you start any of those projects, check with the town about what permits you need?
Yes, sir.
Now, she's just going back to the use of the present, I counted four tenants, one of your blocks plus your business. Is this a rental property?
It's my son, basically lives there and he's got a couple of friends living with him. It's not a rental property for me.
So we can follow up with the applicant to make sure that, just so you're aware, sir, the rental registry, when you're the owner of the home but not the occupant, you register the property as a rental. If the, the occupant is a family member, as defined in the code, then there is no fee associated with the registry. You're just essentially complying with the registration but with no fee.
Okay.
So we can, we can follow up with you on that, just to make sure you've got everything filed.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fences, permits, rental properties, registries, anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and we will be in recess until eight o'clock. Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and we will be in recess until uh eight o'clock. We can um get back to order. It appears that uh the applicant, the first applicant is still present, as is the second applicant, as is the third applicant. So we will just proceed in the order that the cases appeared on our uh agenda, which makes it very easy. So the first matter is the application pertaining to thirteen seventy-two Bay Shore Boulevard. Uh, this is an unlisted uh action for secret purposes. Uh, I would move that uh we adopt the environment, short form environmental assessment form that was attached to the application and make a uh negative declaration.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're all present, seven in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we are all present. Does someone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Which one we talking about?
There are two applications, so we'll break it down into, um, first we'll deal with the, actually, I guess it would make sense to deal with the use variance first, because if the use variance doesn't, it weren't to be approved, the area variance would be moved, so.
Correct, and just so for the clarity, the use variances, the item that requires um is unlisted, the area variances would be um a type two.
Type two, right, okay. So I'll make a motion that um we grant the uh use variance as requested with the uh following findings. Uh, the reasonable return on investment really isn't applicable because the, to this situation, because this property is owned by the town and is being sold in a manner that it cannot be otherwise developed unless a use variance is granted, so it would be impossible to develop it in any way that would be permitted under the zoning um uh r- regulation, so there would be a zero return on investment uh if the variance were not to be granted. It's clearly unique in that uh it's not, it can't be developed. It's being sold in a size that would preclude development other than a potential storage uh structure. Uh, it is not the first um application of this nature that we've had in this area and there might be more to come in the future, but uh it is still unique given the topography of the land, given the uh development on the uh east side of the road and the fact that the west side is is not capable of development. Uh, there won't really be any change in the character of the neighborhood. The structure's going to be um, when the four hundred feet of this structure is combined with the five hundred and thirty feet of the existing garage, the applicant is only slightly above what the town has determined is an appropriate amount of uh garage space and that kind of storage space. Uh, it's not going to change the character of of the neighborhood. Um. It is self-created in in the fact that he's negotiated the purchase from the town uh and created the situation, but the need for the facility is not self-created. It's created by the uh, it would be awfully tough to take a boat of the size that, I mean, it looked to me to be roughly twenty feet or more sized boats and back them down the hill uh to the bay to store. I don't think the boat would survive that intact, so. Uh, it's not entirely a self-created situation. Uh, given all those factors, I would find that the uh benefit to the uh applicant outweighs any detriment uh that would otherwise be present and I would uh uh grant the variance with the condition that the applicant will record and provide to the town, well, no, it will be in the deed from the town to the applicant, uh, a restriction that runs with the land that says that the property conveyed by the town to the applicant uh cannot at any time be sold other than as part of a sale and in conjunction with a transfer of the property. It's thirteen seventy-two Bay Shore Boulevard. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're all present. Motion carries. Seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions, and we're all present. Next item is the area variance to allow for the uh storage structure to be built on the property to uh have less than the required uh lot depth and lot area and less than the required front setback for the structure. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to the area variance?
I'll make the motion that we approve the um, approve the structure and approve the setbacks. Um, I don't believe it's a substantial setback. I don't believe it'll hurt the environmental impact. Um, uh, it is a self-created issue because he is looking for extra storage, but it is a unique uh lot and um and based on the criteria, I believe we should approve it.
I'll second.
Bradley. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and the board continues to be present. Next item on the agenda pertains to the application relating to twenty-six Von Deben Lane. Uh, this is a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request for an area variance on Van, Von Deben Lane with the following findings. Uh, it will not change the character of the neighborhood because it's in the back of the house. Nobody will even know it's there except on the other side of the gully, which is fine. Uh, there are no alter- alternatives uh that we could suggest here that would um not require a variance. It's just the nature of the beast. Uh, the substantiality of the request is uh moderate, but you know, certainly not way out of proportion. And uh because of the steep slope in the back of the house, uh essentially, we have to have the space available for making the construction worthwhile. You don't wanna make it so tiny you can't use it. So, yes, it's a, it's a reasonable request. Um. There'll be no uh adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the area, if granted, because uh we only have a couple of uh pilings going down to the, to the ground level. Uh, and is it self-created? No, because I didn't dig the backyard out. It came that way. So you have to deal with what you got. Uh, the only condition about this whole request is, or this whole motion is that the uh, and it's not really a condition, just the approval of the town building department, that all the the needs for footing and size of lumber and all that type of thing are in line. So it's a really good, good structure. That's the motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're all continue to be present. Motion carries, seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. The last item on our agenda is the application relating to thirty-two Walzer Road. This is a type two action for secret pur- This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I guess I would make a motion, but I, it needs to be altered. I, I would suggest that we alter it first and then approve it, but I don't believe that the six foot all the way to the front corner of the house is good. I also don't believe it's, he's proposing to move it about halfway back to the house, and I don't agree with that either. I would suggest that he brings it about eight feet from the right rear corner of the house, which would be the southeast corner of the house. If he brings it eight feet from the corner, brings it across to the lot line, and then goes back six foot. I would, I would agree with that at a six-foot height. If he doesn't want that, I would suggest that he goes four foot all the way out if, if he wants to, but I would say eight feet from the back corner of the house, just to give him enough room to put a regress window in there at some future point. I also, in, in doing that, I, I, you had mentioned that the fence is built improperly with the posts showing on the outside, the posts need to be on the inside, and the fence needs to be facing, the, the nice part of the fence needs to be facing out, so that needs to be redone, which he understands that. And I believe that'll give him enough room to have a patio area in that corner of the yard. I don't believe having it all the way up would make it for, I don't know, aesthetics. I believe it hurts the character of the neighborhood, having it all the way forward. It, it was a substantial move, and I believe this is still substantial that, that we're giving it eight foot off the back corner of the house. I don't think it affects the environment at all, and it is a self-created issue. Obviously, he put it up in the first place with a little overkill, in my opinion.
So. With, with respect to the eight feet, I mean, on that, as I look at the, at the side of the house, there were, there are three windows that are joined together in the southeast corner, and then there's a distance between that and what are two smaller windows that are set higher on the, on that wall, but are at the same, top of the windows at the same height as the three. So it would be between the three windows and the first of the smaller windows to the west of there, somewhere in there, correct? Like halfway in between?
Yeah, it's, it's, I would suggest it be eight feet, maybe it's ten feet, but no more than, you know, where, where it would be centered between that small, the, the, the smaller window to the right, if you're facing that wall, right, and these three windows. See, in my picture, I couldn't see these three windows, so, so right next to these three windows together.
Which may not, which may be a little more than eight feet, but that would be the location of it, right?
Right.
Okay.
Again, to repair the way the, I mean, he's got to take it down anyway, but to repair the way it was put up.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
No, again, we have someone putting something up without permits and to no, no change in our operation.
And we'll, we'll say it again, also, one other thing to mention, while it's on my mind, there's a sign in the front of the fire department that asks if, if they can see the numbers on your house as you're, they're driving down the street. Driving down the street, it's very difficult to see some of the numbers. Von Deben Lane, not yours I saw, but a couple of your neighbors', it's not easy to pick out where their numbers are. You know, the bigger and bolder, the letter, the numbers in the front of your house, the easier it is for the fire department to get there to save more of it. If nothing else, think of that. And also, come and get permits and call if you have any, you're going to do anything on your property, call and ask if a permit is needed. It's much easier to start out that way than it is to finish up with something that isn't done right and has to be redone. Any other discussion or questions on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we all continue to be present, motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, we're all here. That concludes the last item on our agenda with the, with the packets. Everyone should have received a copy of the draft of the minutes from the February fifth, two thousand eighteen meeting. Did everyone have a chance to receive and review those minutes? I would make a motion that the minutes, did anyone have any corrections or additions or changes that they thought should be made to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, I would move that the minutes for the February fifth, two thousand eighteen meeting of the board be approved as prepared.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, we are adjourned.
Yes, we are.